It's Thursday, February 2nd. Rise for a salute to the flag, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see so many people here. Our meeting tonight is for the consideration of start times for schools for the 2017-2018 school year. Do you want to make your presentation first?
Sure. Sure. So, we met previously and we got a lot of, we had a lot, not a lot of slides. We had about seven or eight slides that walked us through this. I promise I'm not going to give you the same slides again. A little bit of an update to do a little bit of a review and to demonstrate the consideration of, at the end of that meeting, we had a suggestion that we push back one of the times, 10 minutes at the Beaverbrook Elementary School. So we've got that information for people tonight. And as school committee members, as I mentioned last time, I really, I met with school committee members about this in the week previous to our last presentation. You guys asked me a lot of questions about it. You asked me a lot of questions at the last meeting. The community asked a lot of questions. So what I want to do is I want to do two things. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to bore people with details and things they already know. And at the same time, I want to do a thorough and thoughtful job of presenting the information to people and providing whatever information they need tonight. And I'll leave it up to the committee to go through the questions and answers that however they want to handle that. So for tonight, I kept it to three slides. The first slide was an introductory slide that Teresa's already moved on from. So we're already a third of the way through the presentation. The next piece for me, though, that I need to explain to people is that I have great news. It's not perfect news and it's not fake news, but it is great news. The great news is I want us all to remember that we're moving into a brand-new building that's going to help us reconfigure the entire district in a better way and provide space for all of our children, pre-K through 12, for learning that they don't have right now. Even at our early elementary levels, that will not be in a new building, they will benefit from more space and more technology. So that's good news. So when we set off to build this new building, and I don't know if people can see that or they need the, we have a copy of the slides here. Maybe we can, can we share them with people in the audience if you can't see? I'm squinty-eyed because I don't have my glasses with me. So, the location here on Glenowitz Way of the new building does not allow for a secondary access road. That seemed to be something that people didn't understand at the last meeting. So I want to make sure I explain that to people. We're basically surrounded by wetlands. It's possible. It would cost a lot of money. The town doesn't have the money to build that road. And the construction of that road can't be a part of this building project because that's not reimbursed with light MSBA. The MSBA is paying for about 60% of this project. So I tried for about five or six years to build a school at Griffin's Dairy. That didn't work. If we were still trying to build a school at Griffin's Dairy, which is the only other town-owned land, to build a school, we wouldn't have a new school. Because the school building is going to be placed behind the current high school, that means 1,100 people will be going up through the intersection of Glenowitz and Bedford to get to school. That does not allow for everybody to come at the same time. That's just a logistical situation that Abington has, based on where we are building this wonderful building. The location of that school is still safer, in a lot of people's estimations, and I haven't had anybody in emergency services disagree with me, than the current direction, the current condition we have on Washington Street with the Frollo Middle School that dismisses basically out into what you can consider four lanes of traffic. Two that are turnoff, that people do U-turns in to pick up their own children. They, they do not drive well in those areas. And then the other two is, are Washington Street. So the location is where it is, and that's why we put it there. And if we're going to have the building there, which we are, allowing a 50-minute gap between the middle school and the high school, coming at different times, so we don't want everybody coming at the same time, provides the best condition for the schedule. Because building, one building will have first period, then the other building will come in, and then the bill, and then the schedules will be synchronized from then on until the other, until the first building dismisses. So by having a 50-minute gap and the periods coincide with each other, of the seven periods, five will occur simultaneously. So we'll be able to improve the program for our students next year and down the road as we continue to maximize the efficiencies by having this co-located school. The other thing people need to understand is that not only do we have to have one building come in first and one come in second because of the intersection, we also have a three-tiered bus system. The reason we have a three-tiered bus system is because it would cost literally hundreds of thousands of dollars if we had so many buses moving around the district that we did two loops, or one loop would be fairly, you know, ridiculous in terms of the cost. We save money because we use the same bus three times to do first one level, and then another level, and then a third level across our district. High school, middle, elementary, and this year we've broken up in different ways. We basically have three bus loops. We'll still have three next year. Starting the high school, middle school, and the elementary is best in that order, high school, middle school, elementary, because of the following two reasons. Now, there are other reasons that we talked about, that the mitigating factors that we could possibly overcome, but these are the two big ones. The middle school start time, and the middle school starting first, and the middle school next year will include fifth and sixth grade, would mean that children that are 10, 11, and 12 years old would be going to bus stops at 6:40 in the morning. For at least two months out of the year, it's dark. We use community bus stops where students have to walk to bus stops. And it's my belief that 10, 11, and 12 is, walking to those bus stops at 6:40 in the morning is not the condition we want in Abington. Currently, our secondary students do that. They're a little bit older. I don't like that condition as it stands, that our secondary students are already doing that. But they are a little bit older and a little more able to handle that. The other situation would be if you brought the elementary in first. If you brought the elementary in first, then the older brothers and sisters at the secondary level would not be able to help their parents out when those, when those children go home. We've got many families where both parents are working, or it's a single-parent home where the parent is working. And to have our elementary students go home and not have the assistance of their older brothers and sisters in terms of supervision and watching them, I know that some people can provide that daycare for their families without having to worry about that. Many, many can't. And I don't think that, that would be the best circumstance for Abington. There are communities that have late starts for their high schools. I wish we could have a late start. I'm not saying that we will never have a late start. I'm saying with the current conditions and obstacles that we have, this is the best option for us. The, the, the cost is, basically, here's more great news. Our high school students are really busy. Oh, my gosh, Cassandra, we just talked about your schedule today. It was crazy. Our high school students are really busy because we offer them a lot of exciting things to do. The window of opportunity for our high school to go late is only from 8:00 to 8:15. That's a 15-minute window for us to squeeze this in because any later than that, it impacts their after-school activities in a, in a negative way. With the current conditions that I've described, I don't feel it's best to accommodate that. The 30 to 45 minutes additional late start that a high schooler would get does not, for me, overcome those negative things that I've described to you as much as we'd like to have a, a late high school start. I've spent a lot of time on, on the late high school start today because this is going on on cable. People may not have seen the last school committee meeting on cable. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the elementary level. We had a number of people talk to us at the, about the elementary level the last time we were here. And their request, if we could see the next slide, the difficulty with what we proposed to you last time was that the Woodsdale and the Beaverbrook Elementary School were coming at exactly the same times. It's impossible to be in two places at once if you're, if you've got several children that you're dropping off at different buildings in your family. So, and we don't know how many people that would be because we don't know how many people would take advantage of the bus or wouldn't take advantage of the bus. So what we've done is we've, we've provided a 10-minute gap between the Woodsdale and the Beaverbrook. We've pushed the Beaverbrook back by 10 minutes. We pushed the afternoon kindergarten back by 10 minutes to coincide with that. We would still understand or realize or be able to assist. You may not be able to get through the light on 18 between the Woodsdale and the Beaverbrook in 10 minutes and get your children in the car. We'd still make sure that students were well-supervised and safe until their parents were able to get them who are picking them up at both buildings. But the 10-minute gap saves us $5,000 in supervision costs. It's less time that students are just waiting. Although they're supervised, they're just, they're really not, the time isn't well-occupied. And my initial concerns were really, in, in doing that the last week, were really around professional development, being on different cycles with different buildings. But because the teacher day encompasses both of those times, it wouldn't be a problem with professional development. And I was a little concerned about our traveling staff moving around the district, art, music, PE. But this would not throw those schedules off. Anytime you throw those schedules off, you have to worry about coverage. When you worry about coverage, you have to add staff to cover. And so that, that does not have a financial impact that I was thinking about at our last meeting. And so this is the recommended start time for next year because of everything we've described over the last couple of meetings. And Felicia helped me last time. She's out with pneumonia, but I'm ready for questions that people may have.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Peter?
I don't.
Sorry.
I just want to, can you flip back to the first slide, Teresa? I just want to clarify that third bullet, and I have to read from here, that's way too small for me. The middle school, when we say the middle school, we're talking, it's not just grade five and six, we're talking grade five through eight going to a bus stop at 6:40.
Correct.
And currently, half of that population does that now. But just to clarify, just so everyone's, middle school is five through eight?
Thank you for clarifying it. Yep, that's exactly right. That adds five and six at 6:40, which we currently don't have.
And then on the start times, what time would a full-day kindergarten be 9:15 to 3:20?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions?
What time can the students enter all the schools?
Good question. And Deirdre helped me out. She asked me a question this morning through an email. We have a breakfast program right now. Each of the buildings has a breakfast program, K through 12.
Sandra.
K through 12. We'll have one next year, kindergarten through 12. And you, the cost is $1.50. And I'm told the students like it, the breakfast sandwiches, so, and smoothies and French toast sticks. I'm getting hungry. It's, it's $1.50, and for that, the students are able to come in 20 to 25 minutes early, depending on the building. So each of those times, you could, you could go earlier by 20 to 25 minutes, depending on the building.
So the kids that aren't eating, they would just sit in the cafeteria with the other kids, right?
They could, they, we.
That would be their only option, is to be in the cafeteria?
Yeah. Dollar fifty per meal. Yep. And I, I mean, my kids in the town I live in have used it, and I, it's, it's a lot easier in a family, and buck fifty's not bad for a nutritious breakfast, so.
What is it, if they didn't, if they still didn't drop off at the Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes.
Did it stall you in all fifty, though?
No, 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 no.
Sorry, I have one more question. So the St. Bridget's students, they're going to be traveling with, I don't know what their schedule is right now, what their start and end times are. What would their start and end times be and who would they be traveling with?
So we transport the St. Bridget's students in town that require transportation as part of our transportation system. And I believe we were looking to add them to the 9:05, the Woodsdale, the Beaverbrook I talked to Matt Collins over at St. Bridget's a couple of weeks ago. I promised him I'd tell him what this was as soon as we figured it out.
Okay, so it would be the Woodsdale kids then? The 9:05?
It would be the Woodsdale or the Beaverbrook. I want to talk to Matt and I want to talk to Felicia before I am certain on that. I don't think that would, that, I don't think that would necessarily slow our process down, though.
Is there any more questions from the committee? If there's anyone in the audience that has a question or comment, please, when I call on you, tell us your name and where you're from. Teresa, do you want to start us off?
Teresa Sullivan, principal of Abington High School. I had come to the committee in November. I know a couple of people weren't here just to advocate for the late start for the high school. And then I thought the decision was going to be made last Thursday. We had scheduled a meeting with students on Friday morning on the half-day. We provided breakfast, Sister Principal Sullivan and I, to talk about transitions, protocols, proms, graduations, morning announcements, bells, you know, traditions moving forward. And the student officers, the class officers of all of the classes, except for the seniors who won't be going, are going to develop transition ideas, something at the end of the year. I'm not going to give away what we're talking about. And then summer activities for transition activities and then opening activities. So that was the focus of our meeting originally. It quickly turned to, what's the schedule, Miss Sullivan? What's the schedule, Miss Sullivan? So they had a lot of questions that I think we answered, but they would like to take a few minutes to advocate for what they believe is in the best interest of high school students with the understanding that, you know, that it's a school committee decision. But I certainly support the democratic way. Alana Burgess and Fraser Tumi.
Hello, I'm Fraser Tumi, the class president of the class of 2019. And I want to express a couple of concerns about not having the later start for the high school. I think the biggest thing is that many first-period teachers will always complain about how their class is just full of zombies, period, when they're all sipping their coffee, they're not really ready to answer questions, they're not engaged in the learning. But I think that when we have a Wave Week Wednesday, not only is attendance improved, but students are just more willing to get up out of bed. It's like waking up on your birthday. You're just kind of, you're just ready. You're happy about the day. I know I personally feel better on Wave Week Wednesdays. We've spoken to many students about how they feel on a Wave Week Wednesday. But I think that aside from the fact that these students are just zombies in the morning, they're also, many of them are coming into school on their own. They're driving to school and they're so sleep deprived. They're always complaining, it's, it's too early, like, I just can't get up in the morning. I'm having such poor sleep, no matter what time I go to bed. But I think if you're having so many students driving to school, many of them that are tired enough, it's not good to have tired people driving. When people say, like, most of the accidents that happen are two miles away from your own house, that is so true when you have so many students going to school that are half awake. Or they're going to Dunkin' Donuts or Mary Lou's and they're drinking a coffee, which is making their blood go all crazy places and their heart's pumping really fast. Then they're nervous, like, what's going to happen? I'm going to be late to school. If I'm late to school, then I can't do all of the extracurricular activities that I have. But I think it's very true that if you have young children waiting at the bus stop early in the morning, there is danger there. But if it's, but if it is a community bus stop, there's multiple people there, and there is safety in numbers. But I think that most 10-year-olds and 11-year-olds and 12-year-olds know better about stranger danger. They know to be aware of their surroundings. They don't just sit idly by and think, well, nothing's going to happen to me, I'm in such a nice town. Many of them are looking around, making sure when they cross the streets, going to Dunkin' Donuts on Fridays and half-days, they look both ways before they cross. They don't just go, well, I have the light. So I think that it makes sense why we wouldn't get the late start, but I think that we have more reason to take advantage of a late start. Thank you.
I'm Alana. I am the secretary of the class of 2018, also the first class to graduate from the new school. I'm very excited for that. So our, our main argument in this is high school is the most crucial time for GPA. In middle school, it's very social. It's very about building your own personality and like getting with other people and making friends in that sense. But high school, it's all about GPA, college, and all this. And I take three AP classes currently, and my first-period class of the day is AP US History. Now, I love the class because I am a history geek. I love it so much. However, the majority of the class recommended into it for participation and their excellence in other classes. It's such a, it's a depressing amount of participation for a period. And I think, and every day, Mr. Scott mentions it, and he's always like, this class, you're so tired, guys. Like, come on, wake up, this is an AP class. Like, you're, like, you're our school. Like, this, you're defining us, we need you. And so, sleep, we went around today, well, even in the past, talking to so many people, teachers, students, everyone. They all said that, that like, getting up early was really not their thing. There were some morning people, but most were not so. And especially hockey players, they have practice in the morning, very early in the morning. And most of them just have time to get home, maybe shower. Some of them don't, you can tell. And then, and then they come, and then they come right to school. They don't really have any time to like, do anything or like formulate their day or think about what they're going to do. And in terms of music teachers, it would be easier for the middle school to start earlier because as Abington tradition, the band and chorus for the middle school starts earlier, and then seventh period for the high school is when band occurs, and later on is when music. So, and band is such a crucial class for many people that it's useful. And you mentioned about the young kids in the dark. Fraser mentioned it very well, that, like, kids at this ti, like, at that time, especially in middle school, they, they're already used to it. I, I took the bus. I was there very early in the morning and I was fine with it. And there are some students, especially in high school, that actually have to walk to school every day. And someone in our student leader group as freshman class officer, he has to walk 1.5 miles to school every single morning. And it takes him like, it takes him like 40 minutes to get to school. And starting that early, isn't that, and it's much less likely for a middle schooler to be walking to school than a high schooler. And at least in terms of leaving, if the middle school would leave earlier, if the middle school left later than us, high schoolers are really crazy when it comes to leaving the school. And I would like to say that we could control them, but the honking the horns and all that, it probably will not leave the school. High schoolers are crazy. They want to do that. And I feel like we're much more calm entering the school. Like, leaving the school would be such a distraction for the middle schoolers. And, um, so, some, I was talking to some people about it, and they were worried about getting out later. But at high school, many people have jobs, and the jobs are at 3 o'clock, so it'd be perfect time if we left at 2:40 to get at that time. And you mentioned not having some kids, like, not having kids with older siblings to be home at the same time. For NHS and for child development, I think it would be a great idea if we had a program for younger kids that either high schoolers could run and just to watch the kids and like help them with their homework and while, because we have tutoring in the library currently for just in the high school. But if we spread it out to high school and middle school, all in the same area, I think we could give those younger kids a chance to be learning in a school environment until their parents pick them up and giving, like, me and Cassie on NHS volunteer hours. So that was our main argument, just, we really, we really need to focus on participation and on Wave Weeks. Everyone is so, like, it's, there's so much more work to be done on Wave Weeks. And like, it's, it sounds weird, but the vibe of the school is just so much more energetic when we start later. And it's just such a good thing, as Fraser mentioned.
I had forgotten to mention, it might have been my nervousness or maybe my absent-mindedness, but it, mental health is a really big factor here. Not only are teenagers, due to all of the stress of school, they have, they can get anxiety disorders, or if they're just so like bogged down, like depression is a very common thing amongst teenagers. But having a proper sleep, that can really, that really can fix that. Just imagine having like a 14-year-old kid waking up in the morning with his alarm clock going, do I really have to do this again? Like, can I just skip school today? And then one day becomes weeks. Then weeks becomes attendance failure, which becomes, can't play football anymore, I got kicked off the team for attendance failure. But you have all of these kids that are coming into school that are just so sad. And I know that sad is a very, it's a very broad, but it's also a very weak word, but sadness is really important in a teenager's life. Obviously, it's important to know what being sad feels like, but when you have kids dragging themselves out of bed, thinking about, about the fact that they're there and then that's all that they can focus on, their mind becomes more of a distraction than, oh, but I've worked like right after school, I can't make it because of this new late start. That is just what I think. I think that mental health really is the biggest factor here. But, I mean, obviously, I thank you for your time for listening to us both, but I really implore you to reconsider and have us have the later start.
And I'd like to thank you for coming and advocating for yourselves and your fellow students. You both very well-spoken. Thank you.
I agree with them 100%.
I, you know, I don't think there's anyone that doesn't think it would be a nice thing for us to be able to do, is to have a later start time for high school. As a middle school teacher, a lot of the things that you both mentioned are things that I saw in my middle school students. They don't like to get up in the morning either, and they don't want to be there at that time either. And you know what? A lot of them are downright sad first thing in the morning. And I really enjoyed hearing you talk about the hockey team that practiced so early in the morning. Because my first year of teaching at Abington High School, I taught senior English, last period of the day, and 75% of my students were on the hockey team. And if you think they're sleeping first period, you should see them at the end of the day. However, that's neither here nor there. One thing Peter said when he started talking today was that we're looking at a schedule for next year, and it's not cast in stone, and it doesn't mean that it won't happen in the future. Because we have a lot of other things that are going to be going on here next year, too. We've got a lot of change. We're moving a lot of people. We're moving students across the board. And we're going to have a building being torn down at the same time. So you're going to be going to school on a construction site. Trying to make so many changes at one time is very difficult. Excuse me. One thing we do have the luxury of, if I can put it that way, next year, is we can look at how traffic comes through that intersection, how it gets up to the high school, how buses go through, how the schedule works. And there probably will be changes. When you learn, when you work with something and learn with something, nothing is cast in stone forever down the road. And I think that's one thing that we probably will bring up and we will look at again. But it's something that, as far as I'm concerned, I would love to see it happen. I don't want to see middle schoolers hurt because of a change either. I spent too many years working with middle school students. But I want to see the schedule that works best for everybody. And I think we need to have to work, we, we're going to need to work with what we've got, see how it works, and see what changes we can make as we go through. We can use experience in the process next year to help us get a better picture. Does anyone else have something that they?
I have two questions.
Do you want to come up and use the microphone? That way people watching at home can hear you.
Todd Russo, I live on Melinda Drive. The first one was, I know Peter had mentioned about after-school activity starting. So what did everyone say about that? If you guys were to start later, does that impact anything?
So in terms of after-school activities, the biggest thing is sports. And most sports already start later. There's very few sports that start right after school or at 2:15. So having this, um, pushback, like, until 2:40, if we get out then, won't affect sports that much. If anything, it just gives people more time just to get right into sports and just keep going, keeping the flow happening. And also, one thing is, if the middle school is still in school while we're out and, let's say, getting ready for sports or doing something, like I said before, high schools, high schoolers are crazy after school. It's their time of our most energy. So it, first of all, it'd be better for us to incorporate it into academics, but like, it's, it would be awful. but, like, it's, it would be awful having people getting ready for sports while other classes are going on. But it wouldn't really affect many sports practices itself that much at all, because other schools get out at this time.
Can I say, as crazy as you guys are, I'm glad our middle schoolers are going to be sharing the building with people like you guys? You're pretty impressive.
And then I just had a comment too about the, uh, about if you had like a tutoring type thing too, I think that would be really good, because the simple fact that, where we've made, you know, the point that a lot of parents do work, both parents work, they get home, the last thing they want to try to do is try to figure out some kids' homework. So, if, if there's, if there's people, like, almost not really their age, but, you know, whether it's typically in their peer, they may see them in school sometimes, they may be more apt to listen to you guys and things like that, and I think it's a really good idea on that part. And I have a couple of questions about that too.
Did you have some, you had other questions, or?
Yeah, well, I didn't know if anyone else wanted to comment on their stuff.
I would, I'd like to. I just want to thank Alana and Fraser for speaking. And being a parent experiencing, as Kathy said, you know, we can go off experience, wave week Wednesday, every other week, is definitely a different, I agree wholeheartedly with everything you said about that. I live that right now. And, also having a hockey player, the days start early, and, you know, four o'clock, you get up to go to practice, and, and they don't have time, they don't go home, they go right from the rink to the school. So those, those points are very valid, and then, as Kathy said on the other day, they're very tight too, but I think you made valid points in your discussions, and thank you for coming.
I think I should probably say that, uh, I think there was a concern also about wave week Wednesdays being able to continue, and I know that that, that was one of their concerns, and I should probably publicly address that, you know, we are looking at ways to accommodate, um, common planning time, uh, because certainly those twenty days, we would be coming, currently, we would be coming in at the 8:15 time, the same as the middle school. Um, so that wouldn't fix the, the bigger problem here. So, that certainly was a concern, and we, and waiting for the decision meant, you know, what, what are we going to look at uh, for ways to continue to provide common planning time for the high school faculty, particularly, you know, pre, pre-NIASK years, you know, coming up, so, we, we, we don't want to lose it, um, and we don't want to upset the tra- flow of traffic, you know, and everybody coming at 8:15, I realize that was a significant part of the issue, uh, that we all couldn't come together. So, we are going to look, you know, at, at wave week Wednesdays.
Ways, ways to, we're going to find a way to do it.
Find ways to keep it routine, um, so that it's consistent, I think the kids have adapted well, I will say that, um, in, in the high school, at first, when we put it in, we thought we have staffed with pairs and tutors, the library, the cafeteria, the computer labs, uh, Ms. Sullivan and I were directing, you know, in the morning when kids came in, because a lot of students come in, our school's actually open at 6:00 AM, so, um, schools, kids, students can come in at six, there's no supervision necessarily. Um, they don't need it. So, um, even on wave week Wednesdays, they come in whenever they want, and up until that time, the buses don't change anyway. But we thought we were going to have to, you know, you have to stay in the cafeteria, you have to stay in the library, we're working, um, and after the first year, we don't do that anymore, they, they are, in a sense, it feels more collegiate campus-like, um, and if they, you know, sit in the hallway and talk, or find a corner to chat, or, um, that's really been very positive for students. So we do want to keep it, and we'll, I'll probably come back to you next month with Plan B.
Just to make a comment on what you previously, previously, the comment that you previously made about the after-school, and what you were talking about with younger kids. I, I'll, I'll be a senior next year, but I'd be so glad to, like, either help in leading that, or help run it along with um, Mrs. Crowley, the librarian at the high school. She's very, she'd be so excited to do that, I, because I know, and I, I think there'd be, there's a, many people that would love to join in on that. So I think if there are any concerns on getting it organized, that those can kind of, there's, there are many people that would love to participate in doing so.
The high school had just started a few weeks ago, the ACE program, where students are tutoring. And I think, even though I could not sign up, as I had such a busy schedule with play practice and all of the other clubs that I have thrown myself into, I find that, even this morning when we had our meeting, or Friday, when we had our meeting with all of the class officers and the vice principal and the principal, that, once they had kind of, like, today this morning, uh, they'd given us about ten minutes to talk on our own. And I found that a lot of the students that were kind of quietly sitting when our principal was in the room, started to be really engaged. So, I think that allowing us to have this later start, and then having all of the students waiting, would be like, if we can tutor them and we can help them, they're more apt to listen than maybe if the teacher can explain it to them, or the teacher can help them. I think there would be plenty of students, there already are, that are willing to help. So I think that would be a great thing to continue into the new school and with the younger children, so that they can have a better high school career, and in turn, a better college career.
Thank you. Cassie, did you want anything?
Um, I was going to say that, um, I signed up and I joined the ACE program as a tutor, and so I've stayed a few days so far since it just started recently. And while no one has come to be tutored yet, like, there have been people who said that they want to be tutored in the future and stuff like that, so I think that having some kind of program would be beneficial, considering, like, you do have volunteers, and people who need hours, or people who want to help. So, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
And how many hours does the National Honor Society need to?
You need forty your junior year and forty your senior year.
Anyone else have any comments?
I just want to say, um, that Beaver Brook or the younger kids, they're up a lot earlier as well. You know, they get up at like six o'clock in the morning and they're ready to go, basically, so, having them start earlier might not be that bad. And I can understand, seeing how this year goes, and then maybe, and coming back to it next year. But I definitely think that we should reconsider the start times for the high school.
So can I just say, it's our job to continually consider improvements to the program and the schedule? And, that's what we do. We should, we should, we do that, we should do that, we will continue to do that. So, I, I can commit to that.
Is this on the high school, or the other, other part of the schedule? Because he's waiting.
No, go ahead, I mean, I'm sorry.
Is this on the high school start time that you wanted to speak? Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, I, I, um, do I need to walk there?
Just.
Sorry, I'm nervous.
Anne Boyle, sixty-nine Olson. I wanted to make, I don't, I'm kind of Johnny come lately, so bear with me if this hasn't been discussed, but I have three kids that have been through the school system. And I started all the way out from Beaver Brook, um, yeah, Beaver Brook, all the way, they're all in high school, they will be next year. One of the things that I found to be very difficult, when my kids were at Beaver Brook and in Woodsdale, is the time, because I was trying to work. And, I just want to lay out this opposite argument for, I understand about the safety of kids and nighttime, and I understand, I know what it's like to, to put my fifth grader on the bus for the first time by themselves, when the bus doesn't come to my door. I get all that, I'm a mom. But I would like to make the argument that having earlier, younger kids start later is very difficult for parents that work. Because, those are the kids that we have to monitor, and then we can't really start our workday until nine, nine-thirty, ten o'clock. So, sorry, I'm really nervous. So, it, it, it was a struggle for me, in the school system here, to, um, find ways, or to be, um, creative on explaining when I can come in and when I can't. So those obligations were, were a little difficult for me. So, my question is, is that, has that even been thought of or discussed? Because, if middle schoolers go in at 7:25, you could pretty much wait at the bus stop for them, and then head off to work. You know, um, more so than you can at 8:16. So, I'm more for flipping it completely. That's just what I think would be a terrific thing. But, um, you know, but I do want to put out there that I, I completely understand why, you know, you don't want kids out there by themselves. I mean, by the time they're seventh and eighth grade, they can handle it, but fifth and sixth, I mean, as a parent, it's tough to put that kid out there by themselves, by themselves the first year. But I just kind of wanted to bring up that argument, if, if, I don't know if anybody has discussed it, or thought about that. Thanks.
So, I appreciate it, and thank you for understanding about the safety piece. So, um, with the, with the flipping, you've outlined really, really what happens. We've got, if the, if the elementary goes first, then they get home first, we have a problem on the other end with, with both parents working, and single parent homes where the parent is working, and they're unsupervised at home. So that's, so it's, so which is the, which is the least bad of those options?
Yeah, but I also think that you're better off getting a friend or somebody to watch your kid in the afternoon than you are in the morning. So, and, like we said the last time we were here, is that most, not a lot of people have a tenth grader and also have a first grader. They'll have a fifth grader and a first grader, you know, or somewhere along those lines.
And the current situation that we're recommending provides that really if you have any children at the secondary level, they'll be home before the elementary children will be, we have many people that the older kids provide the supervision for their families.
I mean,
That's the answer.
Yeah, there is, there's not going to be any schedule that's going to fit everyone. I know when I was teaching in Abington, I used to send my children to a neighbor's house, because I had to leave for school before they left for school. And I know my daughter's trying to face the same thing, because she's going to have one in kindergarten next year, and she has to leave for school before he's going to go to school. I mean, it's something that we have to do, and we have to schedule, and we have to juggle schedules. And, we had four different configurations. Some of them with elementary starting first, some of them with middle school starting first. At our last meeting, we looked at a lot of different configurations, um, as far as times were concerned. And, there were pros and cons to every one of them. There is no perfect scenario. However, once a scenario gets put into effect this year, we can look at how it's working, and we can see if there are places that we can make changes. Hopefully, it'll work as smoothly as we're predicting at this point in time, but you know, it's going to be different for everybody. And we're trying to get this settled tonight, so that people will have time to make those arrangements that they're going to have to make. Whether it's high school kids going to bed earlier, or, uh, elementary kids finding someplace to send them in the morning. But it, you know, we're, we're trying to start early so that we can fit all those pieces around it, including wave Wednesday.
I mean, I look at this as a work in progress, in process. We're making a lot of changes next year, and change is good, but too much change can also not be good. And, we can revisit this again, the following year. And, you know, now that everything is at the high school and the middle school, everything is new, everything's in, in, like, a flow, a, a, a good flow, hopefully. You know, so, like I said, it's a work in process, and too much change at once may also not be good.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Sir, you've been waiting patiently.
So, a couple, just a couple of things that were talked about the last meeting, which I don't think I put into the slide, that people had mentioned. So, the first thing is you're talking about the, the early morning program. Which I don't, these next couple of things, I don't think a lot of people, I know when we talked about it last time, a lot of people were surprised about things that were going on, that maybe didn't know about. So the first thing is that morning program, that needs to be communicated to the entire town, that you can drop your kid off twenty to twenty-five minutes before school starts. That there's going to be someone there to watch them. And if you want, and it's free of charge, and if you want to pay a dollar fifty, then they can have breakfast too. Okay, because I know that, there was a gentleman here that was talking about the train schedule, and I take the train as well. And I know the trains are like, at eight o'clock, like, around eight o'clock in the morning, whether it's Abington or South William, and then the next one is around nine o'clock. So, that twenty to twenty-five minutes is gigantic for people. So on that, if that is in place, I don't know if you really need to make those two times any later. You could probably go back to nine o'clock for those, or if you could even back them up into the eight o'clock, eight fifty-five and nine o'clock, or something like that. That's, that's huge for people, that, that little extra time.
I think part of the reason for the change was the pickup times and the end, not just the morning part.
Right, so the other part of that, which was talked about at the meeting, which our teacher spoke to it, was the fact that you don't need to be at school at 3:10 to pick your kid up. You have like a ten minute, it's, was it part of the contract, whatever, they're there for an extra ten minutes or so? I don't know if that's true or not, but that's one of the teachers was talking about.
We're not going to leave kids behind.
Right, exactly, so that's, that's a huge.
Yeah, I don't want to publish that, because you could pick them up Tuesday.
Right, but people in the town, but people in the town don't, don't really know that. So like, if they had that comfort to say, "You're, you're ending both times at three o'clock, but I don't have to be there at three o'clock in two places." And then the other thing we talked about too, was you were talking about how there was going to be an after, maybe a possible free after-school program for, I don't know if it's going to be twenty minutes, a half an hour, to, to absorb that as well, and I don't know if there was any more discussion on that, hiring a couple of people, but again, if that's something else that's in there, that, you know, people, it's just, that's going to reassure people, because the, the first thing you see this, and you see three o'clock, oh my god, there's no way I can do that, because like you said, there's parents that are people that have kids that are right around the same, same age. And then it's two opposite, it was one thing if everybody was at the Froley on Beaver Brook, and it was right there, you know, they could go back and forth, but I think that kind of stuff needs to be communicated out, and I think a lot of the anxiety that's going on will, would subside for a little bit, where you're going to leave it open once you do all your studies and all that stuff, and things like that. I mean, you got to start someplace.
Good points.
So, I think those two, those things, and then, is there any, has been any more discussion about the after-school stuff? Is that definite, or?
Well, we're going to accommodate people to the extent that need to be accommodated, this provides some relief by giving them that gap, because that's, that does give, ten minutes may not be enough time, but that does help.
But we even talked about like, a more extended program.
We'll, we'll do what we have to do to make sure kids are safe and supervised till their parents get them. But I, we don't know how many that is, until we see how many that is.
Um, my name's Melissa Cook, and I'm on High Street, I just, um, nine fifteen for Beaver Brook, I have two going, and, um, I'm just like sad hearing they won't get out till 3:20. And nine fifteen, it doesn't make sense to me, like, though, the elementary school, they're up at that time. So now we're just going to have, we're going to be hanging around the house, until it's time to go. And then to get them at 3:20, we don't get home till like 3:30. I don't have family time with them anymore, you know, like, I like taking them to the park after school, or things like that, and it, so, it doesn't make sense to me to have the, um, high school kids. I mean, I think teenagers, their sleep cycle doesn't allow them to fall asleep early. So, you know, it's hard for teenagers to get up, so, um, I don't know, I just want to state my opinion. And, I'm just like, oh no, I'm not getting them till 3:20, I just, it makes me, um, makes me a little frustrated.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa McGovern, Pearl Street, and mother of a second grader. And, I just want to beat the dead horse here, I'd really love them to just, even a half hour, an hour, just makes a big difference, not having to worry about, like, the other woman said, I've literally had to turn away jobs, because I know I can't get on that commuter rail and be in the city at a reasonable hour for a job. And, it would just be so helpful to make that, maybe eight o'clock train, or, you know, something like that. Or just be on the road by 8:30, to get somewhere, not have to worry about before-school care, as well as after-school care for your kid. So, that's my small plea. Move it up, or switch with the middle schooler time, start time, would be really great, and just really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I hope that I explained adequately to people why we need three different runs, because we use the same equipment for all runs. And, and the bus company, when they have to service, maintain, at their depot, more buses, it costs more money to run more buses. So, um, adding more buses would just mean we'd have to take it from someplace, the programs that we're offering for the kids. And so we don't want to take away from those programs, so we have to have three tiers. We also need time for those three tiers to deliver everybody safely, and then get to the next building, so there has to be a, a gap between them. So there, so in a, in a town, you have to have this gap in terms of your start times. And so, I, I got to tell you, I really do want the high school to be able to go later, and I do want to be able to accommodate parents in the best way possible. The, the, there are, there are many parents who may not, you know, be able to provide the wonderful environment that you're providing by being home with your kids, because they're at work. And I feel badly that that affects you in a negative way. But, sending those kids home by flip, flipping things around just doesn't, they, we would have kids who'd be going home to empty homes. And they wouldn't be supervised. Um, we'd have a lot of them, and so that's just, that's something that we're wrestling with. So, you, I respect that you may not like those things, but at least I've told you what they are. So, um- So, you know why they are the, the way that they are, this recommendation is in place. It's not out of a sense of not wanting to accommodate your lives and, and your lives with your families. It's actually just the opposite. It's trying to accommodate the majority of lives and families that we, that we have to meet the needs of. So.
Have we spoken to any of the teachers at Beaverbrook or Center School to see what they say, like how the kids are?
I'm afraid to do that. I've had a couple of conversations as I've been through the building, talking to people. They're, they're troopers. Yeah, I, they would each probably have a different time that they want us to do something for them. It's a good question. But the couple of people that I've talked to have said, we'll do what we, we'll do what we need to do. Don't ask me to name them because I'm over here.
Sorry. I'm Debbie Ambrose and I'm one of the school nurses for the town. And I just came to listen tonight, but when everyone was speaking, this thought came into my head. And I don't know if we've even addressed this as principals, teachers and nurses. What popped into my head is, I'm at a lower grade level now and we're having a lot of kids who take medication to help them get through the day at school. And what popped into my head is looking at this schedule, is a lot of those kids are on time-scheduled meds. And to get like three or four doses in, you would have to start it at seven in the morning. So, for these students who are on, say, meds to help them make it through the day, I think everyone knows what I'm talking about, their dose might be worn off by ten, eleven. But then for them, if they kept getting doses, the longer dose they have, they might not be able to go to sleep at night. So it's, for the parents, they're going to have a kid who's going to be like off the wall. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Mike, you know what I'm talking about, your wife being a nurse and us growing up together. So I think people need to think about that.
It's a good thing that we have school nurses like you to help us manage that.
Now I probably won't have a job tomorrow. It just came into my head, I'm sorry, it just, I, for whatever reason. And just to put out, as Mr. Schaefer had said, I've worked in many buildings and all of the staff here will, you know, do whatever time we need to do because we are here for the children. And that was my point for coming up today, tonight to speak. I'm not a public speaker, I kind of stay in the background. But we are here for the children and that, I don't know if anybody ever looked at that piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Each of our buildings will have a nurse to, to help us with that. And I have faith in you.
Is there anyone else that has any comments? Yes?
Colleen Greenlaw, one six five, first street, nine, secretary of one of the schools. I'm just curious, currently students are allowed to walk from the Woodsdale School, which is grade five and six. They walk at the middle school, which is seven and eight. When they, middle school students, when they go to high school, they're allowed to walk. Then the grade three and four students, they don't be allowed to walk. Currently at Beaverbrook, you either go to the bus or you're picked up by a car. So I'm just curious about arrival and dismissals. And I wasn't at the last meeting, so it's just like more of a...
See how we really didn't walk, we didn't talk about the students that walk? We really, we really don't know how many students walk on any given year until we, we see.
But you know, just driving back, what, to my daughter, you do see students walking. So are you going to let them, to walk to, middle school students to walk to the high school?
Yes.
Or middle school?
Yes.
Woodsdale students?
That's going to depend on what their parents want to do. I'm trying to answer your question, Colleen. That depends, that depends on where people live and what parents want to do with them. And see, and we have to see where they live and how many want to walk at a given time depending on the new configuration. Yes.
I've never, I don't think they can walk at Beaverbrook. Well, at least when my daughter, you had, somebody had to pick them up. You had to be visible.
So I'm just questioning like maybe, yeah, like a three and fourth, does somebody have to pick them up?
We'll have to see where those children live compared to the school and the distances and make sure it's, it's safe. I can't, I, I don't have a, a map to know where the third and fourth graders live tonight, to know the distance to the Woodsdale School. I'd want to look at that with the principal. We haven't talked about that. So the answer tonight would have to be, we'd have to see where those kids are and make sure it's safe.
Yeah, but my daughter, she doesn't live anywhere near the Woodsdale School and her friends live. They usually would take the bus, but sometimes they walk to their home, like on Bayberry. So my daughter will walk with them and hang out with them. So, you know, sometimes the parents, even if they are bussers, they let their kids on nice days walk home. You know, so.
That's a good thing.
Right, it's definitely a good thing. So I don't know if it's more, I don't know. Fine, I walked home, I, from third grade, I was walking home from school. So, I know it's a different day and age, but.
It's not that different, Sharon Sol from George Closetway. It's not that different. I have a junior in high school, eighth grade or fourth grade, and a two-year-old. And when my high schooler was in third grade, it was actually two, it was grades three through six basically at the time. And they walked them. So, you know. I mean, I think if a parent doesn't want that, they'll have to, that would be a burden on the parent probably.
Right.
If, if the school allows it and the parent doesn't want it.
Right.
But they're, they're a parent and they can decide what they want to do with their children. They're, they, we count on parents to get their kids to us in safe places and safe ways.
But at this time, you can't, at Beaverbrook, you can't just let your child walk home. I'm with them walking distance in Beaverbrook, but my girl could never walk home. If she was, you know, in fourth grade, I would have to be there or somebody to be there to pick her up. Even if I had someone there to pick her up, they would, if I didn't notify Beaverbrook ahead of time, then they wouldn't even be allowed to pick my daughter up.
I commit to you that we will look at the, the walking routes and where people are going because we want to, we want to do that right. But I'm not prepared to, to be able to help with that tonight. So.
Yes.
Speaking as someone who was very recently a child and and hearing many stories from people in the audience talking about their situations with work. As, as a child, I remember is very much so, it, it took a community, like, it, it takes community to raise a child. And I think in terms of before school, it's much harder to get like other moms to like cooperate with each other in terms of work schedules to accommodate like multiple children into their day as opposed to after-school. There's so many times where I could just go to a friend's house and like, there'd be moms switching every day between who would take care of like this amount of kids. And I think it would be easier for after-school for moms and dads to get together and really help with all the children and make sure no one's left alone in their own house than it is before school.
Yes?
Angela Sixten Nelson. Is there, is there any way to have, when you vote tonight, is there any way to do a contention that possibly that you could like a foot on it? That you could revisit this next year? No, like, I mean, I like, want to kind of be slack because you've got twenty thousand things that you're doing. This is just one of them. So, I understand this isn't your first priority, but and not being able to talk to Beaverbrook and, and everybody. But if we can maybe think about maybe doing some kind of survey for next year to just have the opportunity to revisit this after we do the one-year run, I get that you don't want to change everything, I get all that. Like it makes a lot of sense to me. But I was just wondering if it was popular, how would you, or how could it be brought up again next year after we find out how this particular year goes?
I've already got committees of people working on program improvements and schedule improvements. Well, they haven't met yet, but it's in our action plans to begin that work next year. Because you're exactly right and what we've talked about here, I, I meant sincerely. We want to continue to improve this. We do look at it every year. And if there's a way, I, I, if there's a way to get the high school to come in later and if having the elementary come in earlier is a benefit to families overall, then we're going to want to do that. But I can't recommend that to people tonight with the conditions that we currently have. The other thing is, is that those conditions can, that we currently have that are limiting us can somehow perhaps change. There has been talk about building an access here. I don't, I don't know that that's going to, I don't, I would guess that's not going to happen. They've been talking about that for the last twenty years. Because even before we put this school building here, having an access road to this area would have been a good thing. But I don't, I'm not going to limit us to this forever.
Okay, do we have, are we ready to move on with this? Okay.
So, I just want, so. I know what you just said about contingencies and I was going to bring that up myself. So, how can we do this contingent upon revisiting this in a school committee meeting early in two thousand eighteen and also contingent upon studies going on at the various schools?
So to make it easy, you could do two votes, you could vote this. As recommended, you could take a second vote after that to direct me to continue to try to find ways to improve this and better accommodate what we've talked about.
Okay, so we would make it for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen year, as is now, contingent upon study.
Well, that would be one vote.
Okay.
And then you take another vote that would direct me to work on improvements to that. Or you could, you could make it one giant one if you wanted, you could do what you want.
I think we should have two different votes.
I think it's the same thing in one, one, two.
Yeah, I'm only saying two because it's just, the wording just gets clearer.
Okay.
With one vote that says, I've approved, you approve this start time as presented. And then the second vote would be directing Superintendent Schools to continue to look at options to improve that, to provide a later start time for the high school and earlier start time for the elementary level.
And I think we would want to put on that to be revisited at a certain time. Not that just we're instructing you to do this, but as Mike said, that to look at it again in, you know, early two thousand eighteen. When we're making all these decisions.
So, students start taking, making schedule choices, March, principals start putting schedules together. When Terry and Matt, when do we want to come back with this? Next year?
My mother's texting me, I'm sorry.
So, in, because we're really going to do this, I just want to check with you guys. We're going to look at this schedule after we get into the new building. And so we're talking about the eighteen, nineteen school year, right?
Yep.
That another revision, if there was a revision to this and have a later start time. So when would that decision need to be made? About now, February?
Or earlier?
The earlier the better.
Well, we started discussing it this year in January. Can we come back in January?
Yeah.
To discuss?
Yep.
Because if we're going to make.
I brought it in November, first time.
Well, you're not going to be ready by November with a new proposal, though.
But I will. Right here.
You won't be ready, but you won't be ready in November with the preschool, the grade one, two, three.
I'll be ready for it.
Yeah, okay, so.
You know, I think the same timeframe that we're doing this in is probably appropriate.
So we'll be back in January of next year.
All right.
Not a bad time to do it because if there are budget considerations that go along with it, that's when you do the budget presentations.
And, and believe me, I do get the eight, eight fifteen start. I mean, my daughter, my youngest is a, will graduate college this year. She's a nursing major, so she's up at five o'clock every morning going to clinical for six. And she doesn't get home until eight o'clock at night because it's a twelve-hour clinical three times a week. So I get the eight fifteen start because once you get to college, depending upon your major, you may be getting up at five o'clock even though some of you probably don't think you ever will. But, you know, I, I do get it and I do understand.
Can I ask one question before we move to a vote, if that's where we're headed quickly? Where it says option D recommended, and I missed the last meeting due to work, travel, conflict. Was this recommended from the previous meeting or did this come to the meeting as the recommended choice from the superintendent?
The previous D was that with the Beaverbrook and the Woodsdale at the same time. Push the Beaverbrook ten minutes earlier than you're currently seeing. After that last meeting, there was a really good discussion and we, we were asked to go back and push the Beaverbrook back ten minutes.
Yeah, I get that. The question is, is this, that's okay. Was this recommended prior, was this the recommended option at the start of our last meeting?
Yes.
I have a superintendent, not a school committee.
Right, yeah, no, I understand that. I just wanted to know if we came to that conclusion after the meeting or was it the presentation?
It was the presentation.
Thank you.
With, and this is the same with a ten minute change.
With the tweaking of the times. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Right. Would someone be willing to make a motion to approve option D as recommended for start times? Do we have a second?
For the school year.
For the school year.
Seventeen eighteen.
Seventeen eighteen. Mike made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Me.
Okay.
You know, this is a good thing, guys, this new building. It's going to be, you're going to love it. I'm sorry that we can't accommodate everybody's schedules and I appreciate the vote tonight.
Right, now.
I'm sorry it couldn't be unanimous.
Can we have a motion instructing the administration to study the start times and come back to us in January with a?
January two thousand eighteen.
January two thousand eighteen with a recommendations for us to look at at that time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have.
No, it was yes. Thanks.
All right, can we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Aye.
Thank you to everybody that came.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
No, hi, how are you?
Sharon, who do I make it out to?
How is Mike? How is he?
Okay, I have no service. Can I use one of your guys' phones to text my mother? I don't know why. It's stupid.